All right, it is 4:00 PM on July 26th, and we will call this meeting to order. At this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding the following: Pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551071 of the Texas Government Code; the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551072 of the Texas Government Code; and personnel matters under Section 551074 of the Texas Government Code. So, we will be in recess at this time. We will come back out after recess from executive session and give a time where we will begin our regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you. We are in recess. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 4:45, and we are back from executive session. Per our posting, there are no ceremonial items this evening. We will reconvene at 5:00 PM for our regular city council meeting, so we are in recess All right, it is 5:00 PM, and we will move into open session in city council chambers on this date, July 26th of 2022. At this time, we will begin with item 2.1, which is an invocation. And today, we will be led by Reverend Justin Gibson with St. Stevens Episcopal Church. Then, we will follow that with our pledges, led by Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Sheila Patterson-Harris. If all would please rise for us.
Prayers for sound government. O Lord, our governor bless the leaders of our land, where we may give people peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. Lord, keep this nation under your care. To the president and members of the cabinet, to governors of states, mayors of cities, and to all in administrative authority, grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties.
Give grace to your servants, O Lord. To senators and representatives and to those who make laws in states, cities, and towns, give courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people and to fulfill the obligations in the community of nations. Give grace to your servants, O Lord. To the judges and officers of our courts, give understanding and integrity that human rights may be safeguarded and justice served. Give grace to your servants, O Lord. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, that we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name. For yours is the kingdom, O Lord, and you are exalted as head above all, in the name of the Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the United States and Texas flag pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
All right, we will now call our formal meeting to order. At this time, we have citizen comments. According to Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the city council regarding any matter posted on the agenda will complete a sign-up form no later than 5:00 PM on this date. We will provide them with an opportunity to make comments, express a position on agenda items. Any comment received that is in nature of asking a question will be referred to an appropriate member of the city staff for response. Tonight, we have one request for public comment. I'm not sure if Jordan or Jacoby's going to make the comment, but Mr. Madewell, if you'll step forward. And the item he is commenting on is item 6.10 on the agenda item. If you'd just step forward to the podium, sir? And if you would state your name and your address.
Jordan Madewell. Address, 7314 73rd Street. And per last meeting, when we talked, we're requesting a zone change from transitional to M1 to build our office and afford us the ability to put some shop and storage. I have no further comments from our previous meeting.
Nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move to item four, which is our minutes, which is the May 25th, 2022 special city council meeting with the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, as well as the June 28th, 2022 regular city council meeting. If I could have a motion to approve item 4.1?
Move to approve the minutes.
And a second?
Second.
All right, and this time, I will issue a reminder that Dr. Wilson is meeting with us via Zoom. That was posted appropriately, and she is on the screen to our right. She will be voting with her wonderful Mickey Mouse ears on, of which we were probably all jealous of where she's at right now. If it needed any explanation of where she is, I don't think it needs it any further. But at any rate, I have a motion and a second on item 4.1. All in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson? There we go. Any opposed, by same sign? And there are none, so item 4.1 carries 7-0. All right, at this time, we will move into our consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine or enacted by one motion without separate discussion. However, if council member desires to discuss an item, the item is removed from the consent agenda and is considered separately. This evening, we have two items that have been requested to be removed. Those are items 5.1, for purposes of a brief explanation on item 5.11, and then we also have a recusal on item 5.20, which we will take up separately in a separate vote. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Atkinson for him to give an explanation and discussion about item 5.11.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Item 5.11, it's a new deal for us. This is our effort to contract with South Plains College through Career Education, Inc., which is also known as the Truck Driving School that operates out at the Reese Center. Why would we do this? Right now, the single largest set of vacancies we have in the city are for our CDL driver positions. We're targeting solid waste first, and then we will move through the rest of them. But just as point of example, I have 48 openings for CDL drivers, many of which can operate with a B license. Council, if you approve this contract, what's really new and exciting about it, we will hire qualified individuals who are not currently licensed at a slightly reduced hourly rate. We will then pay to the truck driving school to get them their CDL fee, at which time they'll jump up with the other drivers, go through the training, and we will have them out providing services to the public. Forty-eight total openings, so whomever's listening, we look forward to hearing from you.
All right, thank you. And I think it's important for the people to know that one of the big issues that we get emails about is sanitation and trash. And that is something that you need to be aware of. I mean, we are shorthanded in that area, and it's not always comes down to pay, even though that can be an issue. It's just simply there's not enough drivers to fill the void in Lubbock. And so, I think this is a great program. This is funded by ARPA dollars, so it's a net zero to us as far as the city budget. And I think that we can really encourage people to go out and take advantage of this program because it gives you an education, gives you another avenue, an opportunity to get your license, and we help through the process of getting your CDL, and then can in turn provide us with good and valuable employees. That's the gist of it, wouldn't you say?
Well said.
All right. Does anybody have any other comments on 5.11? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. I'll make it really brief. I think this is a great opportunity for folks in the community, as well as the city. The things that we run into is the fact that individuals may have the desire, but they don't have the funds to put them in the places where they can get the training and obtain those licenses. So, I appreciate the fact that we're creating what we need, and I think that's the best, one of the best ways to begin to do that. I just want, I couldn't hesitate to make that statement this evening. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I agree with Councilwoman Patterson. It is definitely a win-win for the city, and I know lots of folks that will benefit, as will the city of Lubbock.
All right. Any other comments on 5.11? All right, thank you. All right, so at this time, we will pull items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.31, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8. I'm just going to say 5.1 through 5.19, and we will exclude 5.2 at this time, and bring back in 5.21 and 5.22, all collectively in the aggregate as one motion. And if I could get a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to that effect, Mayor.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of 5.1 through 5.919 and 5.21 and 22, please say aye.
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 Any nays? All right. I'll say that those items carry 7-0. And then, we will now move to agenda item 5.20. 5.20 is a motion for us to consider a resolution approving the recommendation from the Cultural Arts Grant Review Committee and the Civic Lubbock, Inc. Board of Directors for the 2022 Cultural Arts Program using hot tax funds collected at the end of fiscal year 2021. Ms. Patterson-Harris was involved in that action, so she has asked to be recused from the vote on 5.2. Do we have any comments on item 5.2, Mr. Atkinson? All right. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve item 5.20.
Move to approve.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. I have a motion and a second on 5.20. Is there any discussion on 5.2? Ms. Joy?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I don't know about discussion. Who's here from Civic Lubbock? Vicky, are you here?
Yes.
Come on, come on up, just kind of two quick questions. Number one, what is the source of the funds?
The source of the funds is the allocation from the local occupancy tax.
Okay. And then, secondly, how much were you able to award to these different organizations?
We had $356,708 that we do recommend for grant awards for 2022.
And how are those determined?
There is a cultural arts grant review committee. It is comprised of three members of the Civic Lubbock, Inc. Board that are assigned to that committee, and then two members-at-large appointed by the city council. And those committee members review the applications and make the recommendations to the Civic Lubbock Board, which are then approved by the board before they come to the council.
And were you able to award more this year than last year?
I believe so. I don't, I'm sure it's more. I don't have that number with me, but I know it was more.
Because it's based on your hotel occupancy tax?
Correct, correct, yes. And I know we received more than we did the prior year.
And how many organizations benefited from those hotel taxes?
There were 29 applications that we received, and as far as the number of organizations...
Did you approve all 29 applications?
Yes, all 29 were receiving funding, either full or partial funding.
Okay. And how would someone find out what you all had awarded if they wanted to know?
We don't post that on our website, but we certainly could.
It's probably a good idea.
Yeah, we could.
Okay.
I mean, we notify the grant applicants, obviously, yes.
Sure, but other people have it.
But we could certainly post that on our website.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you, ladies.
That is.
I think that's it. You're off the hook. All right, I have a motion and a second on item 5.2. Do I have requests? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, by same sign? And of course, there are none. Item 5.2 carries 6-0. And that means Ms. Patterson-Harris can retake the stage. And do your little beauty wave as you come through.
I'm going to do it.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to the regular agenda, and council will now move into public hearings on the zone cases. We have items 6.1 through 6.9 are public hearings. Our intent is to take items 6.1 through 6.4, and then items 6.6 through 6.9, and we will open those up for public hearings. 6.5 will be removed, and that will have a separate discussion. So, without any objection, we will first begin our public hearing for item 6.1. If there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition of item 6.1, now is your opportunity. If we have anyone wishing to speak in favor of item 6.1, please come forward. All right, the public hearing for item 6.1 is now closed, and we will next open up agenda item 6.2 for public hearing. If anyone is wishing to speak in opposition of item 6.2, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of agenda item 6.2, please come forward. All right, we will now close the public hearing for agenda item 6.3, or 6.2, excuse me. All right, we'll move to item 6.3. Has anyone wished to speak in opposition to agenda item 6.3? Or has anyone wished to speak in favor of agenda item 6.3? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for agenda item 6.3. All right, 6.4? Does anyone here wish to speak in opposition to 6.4? All right, anyone here to speak in favor of agenda item 6.4? All right, now is your opportunity to step forward. All right, good afternoon. If you'd please just state your name and give your address.
Yes, sir. My name is Clyde Reams. I live at 4618 Fortieth, have lived there for 45 years, and I imagine we'll be there till we either go to a funeral home or a nursing home. And that, I live four houses from this proposed project. I'll make my comments brief. I definitely am in favor of this project being done for several reasons. Number one, I went to the three blocks between my house and Quaker and gave, and presented a letter to everyone that I could and to any person that I could talk to. When I explained the project and what the people from the AIM program want to do, they seemed to indicate a favorable attitude. Number two, I believe the little church was founded in about 1950, and if you look at the plaque, you'll see the names of some of the people who may have even sat on this council. But more importantly, I believe that this project will continue the original vision of the founders of that church, because that, this project will continue to provide people with a place to live, who are continuing their education to present the word and spread the gospel. And I think that's very important, especially in this time. And so, that's the main reason that I support this project. And in addition, I just think it would be good for our neighborhood, because as you know, 34th Street Quarter is considered a declining neighborhood, and I think it would improve and help, and help that situation. That's all I have to say. I am definitely for it, and that's what, when I wrote a letter to your council, and I wrote a letter several weeks ago to the planning and zoning, I tried to explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Reams. We appreciate your comments. All right, anyone else here to speak in favor of item 6.4? All right. Does anyone have any question, Ms. Sager, on item 6.4 at this time, since we had a All right. We'll now move to agenda item 6.6. Do we have anyone here to speak in opposition to agenda item 6.6? All right, seeing none, is there anyone speaking in favor of agenda item 6.6? All right. We will close the public hearing for 6.6 and move to agenda item 6.7. Do we have anyone here to speak in favor of agenda item 6.7? Anyone here to speak in favor of 6.7? All right, you can go ahead and step forward, sir. If you'll please just give your name at the podium and your address.
Hi, my name is Trey Strange. Address is 5145 Aberdeen. I'm the owner of Big Cat Properties, which owns Silver Bullet Sports Grill and Bar. I purchased this business in, let's see, March 9th of 2020, which was 11 days before the COVID shutdown, with my whole life savings tied up. I have since expanded it from 2,500 square feet to about 9,000 square feet, and have gone from nine employees to 36 as of this week. What I'm asking for, for the zoning variance, is not just to become a game room, I'm just adding pool tables, a jukebox, and a Golden Tee machine to the other side of the business. We house the number-one team in Lubbock, who has won the city championship pool team a month ago, and one of the number-two team in the world that just got back from Vegas in March. I'm in jeopardy of losing these teams because I have two pool tables, and I want to make sure they have room to play, and my customers have room to play. That's all I'm looking for. I just want to make sure everybody's aware what kind of zoning variance I'm actually asking for.
Okay. Is Golden Tee the 1994 model or 2000?
I have both. I have the PGA one, too.
Okay, good. That's, that's very important.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Strange?
No, sir.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Strange? Any questions? Ms. Joy?
Mr. Strange, are you telling us that you really don't want a game room?
I'm required to have a game room permit because I have, I'll have six or more coin-operated revenue-producing machines in my establishment.
Okay.
As I'm required to by the city.
But you'll be limited to the six?
No, I'm actually asking...
No, six or more.
I'm going to nine.
Any other questions for Mr. Strange? Any questions for Ms. Sager? All right, thank you, Mr. Strange.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any wish to speak in favor of agenda item 6.7? All right, we will now close 6.7 and move to 6.8. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of agenda item 6.8? All right, seeing none, is anyone here to speak in favor of agenda item 6.8? Is that a, is that a yes?
Yes, if you please, Mayor.
Could you please state your name and your address, sir?
Thomas Payne, 15309 FM 1730 in Lubbock County.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Mayor and council members, I'm simply here to announce, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, because it's always a good idea for the proponent to be present. I don't have anything particular to talk about on this case unless you have questions, but I am here if you have any.
All right, does anybody have any questions of Mr. Payne at this time? Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Sager at this time regarding agenda item 6.8?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Joy, thank you.
I don't have any questions of Mr. Payne, but he did bring up a good point. If you have a case, it's certainly to your benefit to be present when it's presented. The fact that planning and zoning may have approved your request doesn't mean that it won't, that it will pass through here, and so, we really need you. Sometimes we do have questions. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's no other questions, anyone else here to speak in favor of agenda item 6.8 other than Mr. Payne? All right, we will now close public hearing on 6.8 and move to agenda item 6.9. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to agenda item 6.9? All right, seeing none, is anyone have here to speak in favor of agenda item 6.9? All right. So, we'll now close the public hearing on agenda item 6.9. At this time, before we have a discussion, I would call for a request for a motion to approve 6.1, 2, 3, 4, 6.6, 7, 8, and 9. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. I have a motion and a second. This time, does anyone have any further discussion of any of one of these items or any questions for Ms. Sager that she may answer? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Mayor, Ms. Sager, come on, girl. Item 6.2 for me. I am very familiar with this location and the actual structure that is there right now. What are their plans, and what would be required of them if this were, this zone change were to take place? Please help me.
Their plans are to remodel this property into a multifamily development. It will have to be brought up to current code.
Given the fact that I know this location, that it is possibly very far outside of code requirements, they will submit plans to the planning department for your approval. They will submit plans to the planning department for your approval and all?
Yes, and it won't just be our department. They will submit through the building safety department. It will be reviewed by planning, the fire marshal's office. There will be a multiple department review.
And because they're only remodeling and they're not adding on to it, there is going to be a limited amount of requirements. Like it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be subject to all of the new ordinances and things like that with regard to green space and all of that type of stuff?
They will be subject to all the current ordinances, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. That's my concern. Very familiar with this location and there's been some crazy stuff that has happened at this location in the past, so that's my concern. I noticed that it's indicated that the, hold on, let me get myself there. Future land use. It is not compliant, am I correct? It's not consistent with that.
It's the future land use plan has it designated for industrial land uses, probably based on the facility to the north, but it does back up to residential, so.
Yeah. And I know that's not what gets used in the in the in the decision on this. The past histories of what they might do, I'm just, that's my my biggest concern, more than anything. Because I've been concerned with safety issues and all of that in this location. And I just want to be sure that we as a organization will hold our feet to the fire about the things that they need to do. Was the was anyone from this location present at planning and zoning? And is there any reason, were they aware that this would be coming before council today?
Yes, there was an individual present representing this case. We do notify all of our applicants of the council date and times and inform them they or representative need to be here, so they were aware.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Mr. McBrayer?
Is the property currently occupied at all or has it been occupied recently?
My understanding is it is illegally occupied currently.
That's what I
Yes.
I drive past it every time I leave town.
Yes.
So, well, this definitely be an improved use if they if they do so. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on item 6.2? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Are we familiar with any other development that these this particular company has provided?
I am not familiar with this company.
It is La Huerta State LLC. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on 6.2 for Ms. Sager? All right, any further discussion on item 6.2? Ms. Patterson-Harris, is there any question you have that I need to remove this for a separate vote?
If we could remove it for a second vote, they'll also give me some more time. I've been pondering over it for
All right.
a while. And I I'm just concerned and I don't want to, you know, lump, pass stuff on these folks, but I don't know them and they're not here to answer some of the concerns that I have.
All right, let's go ahead and move through any other questions on the other agenda items. And if we have to pull any, then I can get a motion to withdraw the previous motion and we can go from there.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any agenda item 6.1 through 6.9 exclusive of 6.5? Ms. Joy?
Thank you, Mr. Brayer. On 6.9, that's a change from C3 to C4. On their application for the change, they just say existing is commercial multi-tenant. I'm curious about why they need C4.
They need C4 for a dog kennel.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. And nobody has objected to that?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions of Ms. Sager for any of those agenda items previously mentioned? All right, so it looks like we'll have separate, we'll have a hearing on 6.5 here momentarily. But we'll, I will ask for a motion to withdraw the previous motion. I mean, a motion to amend.
Yeah, I
Go ahead, Mr. Joyce.
You make it very easy. A motion to single out something for a separate vote doesn't even really need a motion if there's no objection to it.
Okay. So we can make a motion to approve those other agenda items?
Yes, with the exception of 6.2.
Okay, I'll get a motion to approve 6.1 through 6.9 exclusive of 6.2 and 6.5.
I'll move to make that motion.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any further discussion on those agenda items? All right, seeing no other discussion, I would ask for all in favor of approval of those items, please say aye. I got a lot of ayes. And all in favor, aye? Did I get a second? I don't think I got a second. Did I? How did I get an aye from you over there, Ms. Dr. Wilson?
Aye from me.
All right. And those will carry 7-0. Thank you very much. All right, any further discussion on agenda item 6.2? All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve agenda item 6.2.
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All in favor of approval of agenda item 6.2, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Any opposition? All right, 6.2 carries 7-0. All right, at this time, we will move to agenda item 6.5. And I would ask that anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to agenda item 6.5, please step forward at this time. If you please state your name and your address.
Yes, it's Lisa Boyd and I'm with Home Depot 5801 West Loop 289 in Lubbock.
Are you here in favor of this motion?
In favor, yes.
Okay, if you give me just a second, you can probably just sit right there. I don't know that I'm in opposition, but anybody here to speak in opposition of 6.5? All right, seeing none, now we'll move to all those in favor of agenda item 6.5. Come on forward, Ms. Boyd.
Okay, yes, sorry.
No, it's usually me making the mistake, don't worry. Thank you, you may proceed.
Okay, so I'm basically just here, apparently before, I've been the store manager for a year now. They had originally had a C4 with restrictions. So I'm just requesting a C4 with no restrictions and with the guidance of the planning department. Apparently, we had a lot of mulch and stuff that came in because of COVID and all the product availability. We ended up getting it all in, so we were prepared for the season. It is definitely, it's a temporary deal and right now we went from probably hundreds, probably more like 500 to down to like 80 right now because we're kind of coming out of season. So I think that was the biggest thing is we just wanted to take that out and make it a C4 with no restrictions so we could utilize that space so we don't take up any of the other parking space for our customers.
All right, any further comments you may have?
No, that's it.
All right, you might wait right there just a minute. We may have some more questions. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Boyd at this time? Ms. Joy?
Yes, this is as good a time as any. Ms. Boyd, this location on Loop 289, you all had rentals rentals out of that location, correct?
Are you talking about equipment or pinstock?
Either one.
So we do have tool rental. Pinstock is just a pickup location for us. So they do have the trucks parked there as people rent them.
You've had heavy equipment there?
Yes, we do.
And trailers, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
As well as you said mulch?
Yes.
You understand that you all only operate there at C4 as a specific as specific use with conditions. Do you understand that?
Yes.
And that you have been in violation of all of those conditions? And it's not just mulch, is it?
I'm not sure on that. I know just from talking with the planning department, they were told, they told me that it looked like we had gotten the wrong code. It was supposed to be a C4 with no restrictions.
You had gotten it. Where'd you get it?
Well, I, when I called and inquired about it, because we did get a ticket.
Yes, codes was sent out to you in April, is that correct?
Probably so, yes.
And gave you a notice of violation. You had 10 days
That's correct.
to respond. And they did not hear from you. And they came back out on May the 12th, correct?
That's correct. I was in communication with Kristen Sager through email. Unfortunately, the zoning, I guess the, who was the officer that gave us the citation, basically stated that we had to make sure that we had something in writing. So that's when I partnered with Kristen Sager as well as my corporate office to have a check because we have to have our checks requested to get that.
So are you saying you paid your ticket?
Uh, yeah, I have it.
Okay. But you still didn't, you you're still not in compliance as of May 12th, correct, when you got ticketed?
No, because we were waiting, well, the day I was ticketed was the day I was talking or bringing in the form to Kristen Sager.
You were advised of a date when you had to have an application in
That's correct.
to be before planning and zoning.
Yes, that's correct.
And the citation was issued on May 25th of 2022, correct?
Correct.
And after you were cited, then you filed your application for a zone change?
No, ma'am, I was headed to that day of the ticket, the citation we were given. We were actually, I was actually communicating with Ms. Sager. So it was the same day. I actually was headed that way.
Well, it's not Ms. Sager's responsibility to make sure you do what you're supposed to do. And so what you have, your company has been in violation of this zone ordinance for a number of years, haven't you?
Probably so, but that's why I'm here today, is because I'm trying to clarify.
You're here today because you, somebody came out and told you that you were in violation, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
In fact, your conditions, one of them was that you were to have 150 adjacent parking spaces. In addition, that you can only have outdoor display of portable buildings, plant material, and garden and yard equipment, limited to the front sidewalk. And that no product shall be stacked above exterior garden center chain link walls. So basically, you're in violation of all the conditions that were placed on the company at that time, correct?
Correct.
And there was a reason for those when they were done, correct?
I'm not understanding. What do you mean there was a reason for them?
When a council heard this and they approved exactly the C4 with conditions.
Okay.
So how is it that you and your company can violate that, those conditions?
I can't answer that, but like I said, just from the time I've been there and just in communication with the people that I reached out to, they told me that I needed to request a different zone, so that's why I'm here.
You need to request something different if you want to continue to do what you're doing, correct?
Yes.
Are you continuing to do what's in violation of your current zoning?
Yes, because I'm in a C4 with restrictions.
Are you continuing to be in violation of your current zoning?
I don't plan on being in violation if I can get that zone changed.
If the zone doesn't get changed, what difference-
Then we have to abide by the zones.
Then you will abide by the zone. And it will not affect your business. You'll continue to operate, correct?
Correct, we'll do what we need to do.
You just can't have all of these items that are prohibited, correct?
That's correct. We'll do what we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else have any questions for Ms. Boyd? All right, any questions, Mr. McBrayer?
Question for Ms. Sager.
We'll
While we get to it.
I'm going to close the hearing.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any others here to speak in favor of 6.5? All right, we will close the hearing on 6.5. And at this time, I will ask for a motion to approve agenda item 6.5.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, this time I will open up 6.5 for discussion and questions of Ms. Sager. I know Mr. McBrayer has a question for Ms. Sager.
I was noticing here on the packet that we got that Board Member Bell asked if they were, if Home Depot was built on that location today, if they would need a specific use. And Mr. Spencer said that they would not need a specific use or condition. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if it was zoned today, they would be perfectly fine doing what they're doing.
If it was just C4 without the specific use.
Okay, thank you.
All right, also, in looking at the packet, this, a motion was made by Ms. Tomlinson and a second by Mr. Wheatley that approved, and the commission approved this seven in favor to zero. Is that your understanding?
Yes, it was unanimous.
Okay. All right, that's my only question. Thank you, Mr. Massengill.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Sager, we have several businesses in town that are similar to Home Depot. We have another Home Depot. We have a Lowe's. We have Sutherland's Home Base would probably be the largest. How are all those businesses zoned, to the best of your knowledge?
So I did specifically look at the other Home Depot and the Lowe's. They are both C3 or C4 with a specific use for the outdoor storage and display. Sutherland's I have not looked at. More than likely, they are C3 or C4. They may or may not have a specific use for the outside display.
And back to Mr. McBrayer's question, if all those businesses were zoned today, how would they get, would none of them have specific use?
Provided they were C4 for a home improvement center. And it may be the same for C3. The home improvement center today allows the outside storage and display of certain materials, like the portable buildings, lawn and garden equipment. So yes, they would be able to have all of that without a specific use.
Okay, I think that's important. Thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I have a question. I hope I'm I'm hearing okay. Did I hear something about a temporary situation?
That's what the applicant said. But their, you know, their restrictions today on the specific use limits their outdoor display to the front sidewalk in front of the building. So they wouldn't be able to have it in the parking lot or to the side of the building or anywhere else.
But this, the request would fix the current situation or issue that they have?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
If we approved this change, it would change the number of parking spaces that are required. How many parking spaces would they need?
That's correct. So today, the conditions in the specific use case allow them 150 parking spaces. They would be required 634.
And would we enforce that?
We would enforce it if they wanted to expand the building. If the zone change were approved, they could continue as non-conforming with 150 spaces. If they ever expanded, they would need to come into conformance.
Would you repeat that number?
634.
And that's only if they expand?
Correct.
Square footage?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
In light of COVID and the demand for outdoor supplies, not to mention all the seasonal needs, do you see any other problems that, I mean, just according to what Ms. Boyd said, she wants to work under the guidance of planning, do you see any other problems that we should be aware of?
You know, I think this is a case-by-case situation. Outside display and storage can be done appropriately and it can be done inappropriately. It can get out of hand where you're taking up required parking spaces and we definitely don't want that. So if it were, you know, restricted to certain areas, that would be more appropriate.
But I know that even some of the shopping, like Walmart, I've seen them do stuff. So is it something that needs to be reviewed? Because evidently, we need our outdoor supplies.
Right. You know, it's, if it's associated with a garden center, that's probably enforced a little bit differently because it is outdoor supplies. Technically, the C3 district, C4, does not allow outside display and storage. But if it's something that's, you know, part of- But if it's something that's, you know, part of, under the roof of the building, that could be enforced differently.
Any other questions of Ms. Sager?
Mayor.
Mr. Masengill.
So Ms. Sager, if this gets approved as per the request today, what would have to change? What would Home Depot have to change with the way they're stacking stuff in their parking lot today?
They would only have to ensure they have 150 parking spaces available. That's it.
And other than that, they could stack all over the parking lot?
Yes.
Another thing, just looking through your packet, Ms. Sager, this was, staff did recommend approval of the request, is that right?
We did, yes.
Was there any reason why you wouldn't want to approve this request from your look at it from your perspective?
Since this is a request only to remove a specific use and keep the base zoning of C4, there's no reason for us to recommend now because C4 is appropriate in this location.
And you also had no objections. There were seven notifications sent out and zero returned, is that right?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions of Ms. Sager? Ms. Joy?
So Ms. Sager, when we have a zoning ordinance for a piece of property, when they're not in conformance with it, they can continue not following what the ordinance says until somebody catches them. Is that right?
In theory. I mean, it would be up to code enforcement or a neighbor calling in the, the issue.
And so you're saying with C4, they'll be able to continue to have their Penske trucks, their heavy equipment, their little houses, their little sheds, everything, as long as they have 150 parking spaces?
Correct.
So who's going to monitor that?
That would be up to code enforcement.
So it's back on us again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
That I think, you know, we need to do a better job also of make, informing. I realize that a letter was sent on multiple occasions, but if we're going to do it for one, we need to do it for all. Because it, it can certainly be confusing. So many changes. And I think it would make it easier and we'd be proactive instead of reactive.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion or comments on Agenda Item 6.5? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.5, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And those not in favor, by same sign?
No.
All right, item carries six to one. Excuse me, that will end our public hearings and we will now move to Item 6.10, which is an ordinance second reading. This is to consider the ordinance, I believe Mr. Madewell spoke on this in public comments, to consider an ordinance to request Canyon Rock development for a zone change from Transition District T to Light Manufacturing District M1. I believe two meetings ago, this required a supermajority, and I think it carried six to one. And as this is a second reading, we will now take up another motion on Agenda Item 6.1. So if I could get a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.10. Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. And a second? Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Is there any discussion on 6.10? Yes, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I'll just ask Ms. Sager a quick question, if I may.
Yes.
There's nothing that has changed since the last time this came before the council, correct? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Any other discussion on Agenda Item 6.10? All right. All in favor of approval of 6.10, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And those declining to be in favor of 6.10, please say nay. Nay. Thank you, Ms. Joy. 6.10 carries six to one. All right. We will next move to Agenda Item 6.11. This is to consider a resolution approving and granting a variance from the applicable 300-foot minimum distance provision of the City of Lubbock ordinance at 5015 University, Suite A3, for an alcoholic beverage permit from Paradise Lounge LLC. Mr. Atkinson, if you'd please begin on 6.11 for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Pleased as the council, I'd like to ask Ms. Sager to come up and present this item.
Thank you. Item 6.11 is a separation variance request for a TAVC license for Paradise Lounge LLC. They are located at 5015 University Avenue, Suite A3. They are within 300 feet of Richard Milburn Academy, just northeast of this property. You'll see on the map here, there is a church immediately south. However, the separation between a church and a business asking for a TAVC license is measured 300 feet door to door while traveling along a legal pedestrian path, instead of property line to property line, as it is for the school. So they meet the separation requirement from the church. They are approximately 530 feet away, but they are within 300 feet of the school. They are asking for a mixed beverage permit, mixed beverage late hours, and the food and beverage certificate because this will be a restaurant. The late hours permit will allow them to sell between the hours of midnight and 2:00 a.m. They have also requested on their application that smoking be allowed. I talked with our environmental health department. They will only allow smoking in restaurants. 30% of the restaurant was 70% nonsmoking, and there are a lot of regulations that go with that. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Mr. McBrayer?
So that's a shopping center. Where, where in that shopping center will it be located?
It is on, and I apologize, I don't have an aerial view. It is on the northern portion of the shopping center. It's an L shape. That's on the north portion and the east portion of the property, and it's on the northern portion.
Is it on the university side or is it on the east side of that north?
It's about the third tenant space in from university.
Okay. How many square feet do you know that they'll be operating?
It's about, it's a little over 2,700 square feet.
Any other questions, Mr. McBrayer?
Did you get any opposition from any?
We did not. We sent a notice to Richard Milburn Academy on July 11th, and we did not receive a response.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Wasn't that already a restaurant and bar?
Not this particular tenant space.
Is that right next door to what used to be?
There has been a previous restaurant that sold alcohol within the shopping center. But because it was a different tenant space, this, this applicant has to come before council.
Yeah, it was Pinocchio's Pizza one time.
Yeah, God, there's been several different. All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very familiar with this location as well and actually had a brief visit with the director of Richard Milburn. And I know quite a few of the citizens in the immediate area because there's also a daycare right down 51st Street as well. Did we not have someone come before us requesting the same thing not long ago?
You did.
And it was denied?
Correct.
My concern here, sounds a little funny, that we have a restaurant that wants to sell alcohol until 2:00 in the morning. That sounds like a club to me. I'm just talking about what I'm talking about. I, I, I really get concerned when it kind of appears like an okey-dokey. My concern i- in that area, I'm not sure, they're not here. Are the proponents here? No.
I do see them right offhand.
Okay. So I, I have some concerns. I have some concerns that would really impact those folks around. We don't know what the hours are. If it's a restaurant, restaurants are open up during the day. School time, church time, daycare time. So I am very concerned about, I'm concerned, I've been having concerns about lounges within the district that I represent as well. So I, I, I can't support this this time. We, we've already denied something when someone brought something similar to this, and they didn't even have the 2:00 hours. So I, I just wanted to have those questions answered and state that I am not in, in favor of this situation. Thank you.
Mr. McBrayer?
To refer to her question, when you denied it or when it was denied previously, do you know why the previous application was denied?
I do know we had a previous application where Richard Milburn Academy came to the meeting and spoke in opposition to the request.
But you gave them notice and they did not respond?
Not this time, no.
Have you spoken to them about this particular?
I have, sorry.
You have?
Mr. Mayor. I have. I spoke with the director today. And what they normally do when they get stuff, they pass it up to the next level. She, they did, those individuals did not necessarily have time to send anything back or choose to send anything back, but there is concern.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
You know, I, I see the concern, but what time does Richard Milburn Academy close? Because I know we've already reviewed a few other cases like this. What time do they close?
I don't know.
But, so I don't understand because the last time we, we dealt with this, I don't see kids being out at 2:00 a.m. and I just don't see how the concern could happen. They're keeping different hours. The other part is that this restaurant, lounge, club, whatever it is, okey-dokey, it's facing the opposite direction. I mean, the back part of the bar, which is the trash area and whatnot, is what is actually facing Richard Milburn Academy. So I don't understand why we keep not allowing businesses, small businesses, to create an opportunity in neighborhoods that lack, mostly restaurant, not so much the alcoholic part. But, you know, I think that's my comment to that.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I'm glad you asked. But because, because the, the citizens who reside in these areas, who've had to contend with this type of activity, choose not to have it. I don't know if you have one near you. But the citizens who live in these areas would rather not have them near to them, to serve an alcohol until 2:00 in the morning. The only place that I know that they're doing that are clubs.
Well, actually, I live near Lone Star Oyster Bar on 34th Street.
Yeah, but you, you're ways from Lone Star Oyster Bar.
No, I am only a couple blocks away. I've called them at 12:00 at night to tell them to turn their music down, and they have abided. And so, and I know it's crazy, but I think we're on a first-name basis. But beyond that, you know, I choose not to partake. But I just feel like, you know, we're not keeping the same hours. But, you know, I, I go to bed at 8:30 p.m., so what do I know?
Let me, let me ask you a question. The only, the only issue to me is do we have an approval of alcohol right next door to this establishment?
Within the same shopping center?
Correct.
I believe we do.
So what distinguishes this one from that one? Is it the hours? Is it the smoking? I mean, if we're going to pick one as a winner and one as a loser, what's the reason?
If I remember correctly, the one there currently, you know, and it may not be that particular business, but that tenant space has had a business with a TAVC license continuously since prior to Richard Milburn Academy opening. So they were grandfathered basically prior to the school opening.
Do you know the hours of that business, Kristen?
I do not.
Yes, Ms. Mar, uh, excuse me, Ms. Joy?
How long has it been since we considered the request for the same space?
I, I believe it was less than a year. I apologize. I know we've had requests before. I could not tell you what the business was.
But it's recent, fairly recent?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to say, my thoughts are my thoughts. And it's the thoughts that I have as I communicate with the folks that I represent. So, you know, wherever anybody else stands, that's where they stand. But I'm going to always make sure that my feet are planted where the constituents that I represent reside.
Well, and I, I guess, since we're just having discussion at this point before the vote, I don't like to pick one to win and one to lose, but my biggest issue is they didn't even bother to show up to let us know what their issue was. And if someone showed up and spoke or gave a citizen comment about it and told us, hey, you know, here's why, and we may look at changing our hours or maybe present something, I'd be a lot more likely to want to consider it. But when you've got, you know, no one showing up as a proponent, and we don't know a lot of the details from them, then I'm going to probably be in favor of decline, voting nay on this one simply for that reason. So I think that, that'd be all I have to say about that, is Forrest Gump's statement would be. Mr. McBrayer?
Just in reference to your comment about there already being an alcohol-serving restaurant there, so this would be the second one.
Correct.
That would be my concern. Not that we're favoring one business over another, but we've already got one in that location. And how many do you really need, you know? So I think that's, I think I decline to vote for it as well.
All right. Any other discussion on Item 6.11? Any questions, Dr. Wilson from Mickey Mouse Land? All right. All in favor of approval of 6.11, excuse me?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't see that we have a motion or a second on this yet.
Did I skip that? Thanks for reminding me, parliamentarian. Is there a motion to approve 6.11?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Masengill. A second, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of 6.11, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Nay. All right. Item does not carry 1 to 6. All right. Is there anybody else that has any comments or anyone to recognize in the audience or anything I missed this week? All right. All right, what is 606 on July 26th, 2022? Mr. Atkinson, say.
Thank you. If I could just take a quick moment, I'd like to ask Ms. Jessica MacAcrin to stand and approach. So Mayor, City Council, as you're well aware, Ms. MacAcrin is going to leave us. She is moving to the big city of Fort Worth, where she has been selected as one of the new assistant city managers there. Jess came to us about four years ago. So she started in Bridgeport, Texas. Place apparently I'm not welcome because I've stolen two of their folks over the years. Jess came to us from Bridgeport. She's been here for four years, has done a phenomenal job for us. Many of the folks in the audience today, both staff, our development community, our professional engineers and surveyors, she has led all of the efforts, all of the changes, the improvements that we have been able to make over this time. We are going to miss her horribly. She's leaving us with a tremendous staff that she has helped mentor and grow and put in place. But Jess, don't want to get anything turning bright red or probably would let you comment if we get to bed at first. But thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done. Friday is her last day, and then she is leaving us, her and her family. But Jess, we really appreciate it.
Thank y'all so much. It has truly been an honor to work in the city of Lubbock. I know I've told you all, it is extremely bittersweet. My husband, my girls, and I absolutely have fallen in love with Lubbock. We love living here. We are truly sad to leave and miss our school. I am from Fort Worth, so my entire family is still there, and both sides of our family are still there. And so we are, we are extremely excited, though, to go home and be back close to them as well. So, but thank y'all. It's truly, it's been an honor for me. I appreciate it. I'm so excited. I'll get to meet him, and now I think I'll have met your whole family now. I think he's the only one I'm missing. Thank y'all so much. I appreciate it.
Jessica, thanks, thanks for what you've done, and thanks for serving the citizens of Lubbock. And when you get out there to Fort Worth, you might remind them that it's really not that desert-y out here. And maybe we'll send you a cactus or something to put you off.
Yeah, if anybody has any extra cacti around, let's send it now. Drop it off in the TCU front porch.
That'd be great. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, it is 609 on July 26th, 2022, and we are adjourned.